Yeah, okay.
No, no, Chris.
My man's got his vice chair. He's the, he's the vice chair.
Oh, yeah, I think that's why. Hey, I'm the secretary. I'm moving.
Oh, yeah, that way.
No, he doesn't want on camera like a big hall. All right. Is this how you prefer? See, that end spot.
That's why it gets.
I don't care where I sit. Just don't roll off. If I slide this way, you guys can overlook. We're good. It doesn't matter to me. But I do agree with you.
We're hanging in a minute or so.
Oh, do you want us to go down?
Because, uh, Ben, wait on Ben.
Okay.
Okay, so this is, this is Ben's book.
Even though I was a drummer, I'm not that ambitious.
Oh, really?
What kind of music?
What kind? Back in the 60s. You know what it was.
What my name says.
Don't throw your phone around. When you're ready, Ben, say it.
I'm ready, guys.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the Washington Township Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for the month of April. As usual, our first order of business is our pledge of allegiance. And if you'll all stand, if you can, face our flag. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. With that, our next order of business, Secretary Michelle, take our roll call for us.
I sure would love to. Okay, Chairman Seko.
Hello.
Vice Chair Kosel.
Here.
Mr. Pollak.
Here.
Mr. Pollard.
Here.
Mylum here, thank you.
Okay, very good. This next item, address any conflicts of interest. No point, I presume there's no issue, but I would like to discuss it later on in the evening, right before we leave. I had a discussion with Counselor Seaver and I want to convey to you all what that conversation brought and I think it's something that we have to think about. All right, approval of agenda. We get a motion?
I make a, okay, go ahead.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approval of minutes, last meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, Michael.
I support.
Support from Michelle. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dana, correspondence, nothing? Old business, I see none. Seeing none, we will move forward to new business, which involves a public hearing this evening, 6350 31 Mile Road. Kind of lengthy as far as detail, Washington Township zoning ordinance applies Article 5, site standard, section 5.1, accessory buildings and structures, the accessory buildings in residential districts, attached garages in a R1 and A1 zoning district. The maximum permitted square footage of an attached garage shall not exceed 1,200 square feet, or one-third of the total square footage of the living area of the house, excluding basements, whichever is greater. That parcel number is number 24-04-09-1013 and specifically located at the south side of 31 Mile Road, east of Mount. And I will presume our applicant is here to speak on their behalf and please take the podium and give us your name and address.
Okay, good evening, board. My name is Tony Cavatile and I am requesting a variance for the property located at 6350 31 Mile, specifically seeking approval to exceed the allowable size of the attached garage by approximately 380 square feet. Although we don't meet all the criteria, there is precedent for approval that this, for the record, this board did approve in 2018, actually in August of 2018. It approved my current residency, which is a five-car garage. The house is just under, it's 3,060 square feet and I got an approval for an overage of 389 feet back then. I believe it was an asset, it's for all the properties around there, it improved property values. I don't see that this is going to hinder any property values or any other properties around the new location where I'm requesting this new variance. And there's also other examples within the same sub and the same zoning of the A1 that I have here that have also been over exceeded on, on the garage allowance. So with that, I can answer any of your questions.
All right, very good. I think our staff has provided enough written information, Anthony, for us to ask you some questions before we go to a public hearing. I myself would open it up to the zoning board members if you.
When you were building your house from the beginning, you knew it was going to be over square footage, seeing you've done this in the past?
I did it, yes. I knew it was going to be over a little bit, but the way it's designed, we do not want an auxiliary or detached garage. If you look, I don't, I just don't have the blueprint. We, we use this access garage for, you could say, more of a lifestyle. We use it for parties. It's right off to our Lanai. We use an extension of the house. So you could say, is it really a garage? No, it's used for parties, it's used for almost like additional square footage. It's not used as just a garage to park a car in.
But with your land that you have and the ordinance, we can, you can put up accessory building, you know that in the future.
Well, that's the case where my current residence is and all the other houses that have been built and have the same situation.
Okay.
They could, they could go ahead and.
No, I was the same because if you, we did this back in 2018, approved it for that certain day, for that certain home, did you know going in, before you worked on this one, that you were going to be over 380 square feet?
Roughly, yes.
Anthony, one of the things I'd like to point out is that we have criteria, we have five steps granting or denying a variance. Now, variance can come in two methods, it can either be by use or by dimension. And we're pretty rigid with the five steps that are required for an applicant to comply with, and it's all five, it isn't just some of them. I don't know if you're aware of those five steps. Have you, you've looked at it, can you, you want to comment about it?
Well, I've looked at them and I agree that I don't meet some of those, but in the overall scheme and the, the overall value of the house and the way it looks, I don't think it's against the spirit of the ordinance. It's, it's a nice looking house.
No question. No question it is.
I mean, for me, I just want to add that he's not in a HOA, he's not impeding on neighbors, he's living on a main road to be able to do what he wants in, in the spirit of what I think, and this is what I think, I feel as though we're almost infringing on his quiet enjoyment of his parcel. I, I know that we have these rules and I know that we're supposed to stick to these rules and by all means, but when I look at this house, it's hard to really tell where the house ends and the garage begins because it's all done so tastefully. I, I personally see, you know, why do you need the extra garage? Are you having multi-generational living? Do you store somebody else's car? What, what's going on?
Well, I do have five cars, so that's, that does help. All right, I don't want to keep them outside in the, in the driveway, so I have that option of putting them in.
So I, I just want to clarify for the ZBA quickly. All, all five criteria for a variance do have to be met. That's a requirement not just of local ordinance, but of state ordinance, a state statute. So again, just keep that in mind, that's one of the challenges with applicant's response letter and your testimony is that, you know, you've claimed that certain criteria haven't been met and unfortunately for the variance process, we have to demonstrate that all five of those have been met.
I have a question. Like you mentioned, 2018, did that come before the ZBA?
It came in front of this board, the ZBA back then, obviously different members, but it was presented in front of the board and they did approve it.
Dana, do, do we call that or?
Oh, yeah, I recall it, yeah.
Yeah.
It was approved.
Correct.
Because I, I don't recall it in, in, I was on.
August, August of 2018.
Yeah, okay. And how many vehicles do you have that you need that many garages?
Currently I have four, I will have five in about a month.
But I would think that if you have that many vehicles, you'd want to have a larger lot or it's a larger house.
I, what do you mean, larger house or larger garage?
Well, larger garage, but to, to fit, fit the ordinance, you would have to have a larger house to have the extra garage space.
Well, I think the square footage is what, what you're saying is if you increase the, the total square footage of the home, then it, you know, then that increases the allowable attached, but if, obviously if they're set, and have you submitted these plans to building yet?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's right.
Everything was approved except for this, this situation here.
Because I think you created your own, like your own hardship by requesting this a variance because, you know.
But there is precedent.
Do you know?
It was approved.
Do you know, out of curiosity, what was, because I'm trying to find the difficulty or hardship and I think that's what we're looking at right now. How that was developed or how you presented that before the board in 2018? What was the, what was the hardship or the difficulty that you presented at that time?
The same it is it today. I actually had that one for the purpose of being an auxiliary garage for our pool.
Okay. I saw something in here, you did say something about farm, a farm lifestyle? Is there, do you do any farming or are you planning on doing any farming?
No, but it's, that's a different type of lifestyle. I wanted to be out there on more, more acreage, more be away from a subdivision, HOAs and all that. I, I just don't see how this request is against the spirit of the ordinance overall.
Well, Anthony, you're not over the limit that the ordinance allows by just a handful of square feet, talking about almost 400 square feet. It's quite a big bite out of the apple. My question is, what would be the difficulty to enhance the size of your home to measure up to what the ordinance allows for garage size?
The, the house has everything we want in it already. I, I don't need to make anything larger.
Understood, but your architect may be able to add a sunroom or some other kind of room to give you the square footage to fit you into the garage. I mean, this is not a simple leap, 400 square feet, and we do have a requirement of all five elements, Anthony. That's the trouble I have with this. And would it be precedential? Yes, it could be. You're asking us to over, to look the other way when it comes to ordinance and dimension and that's an important part of a variance request. Your usage description is very good, it's very creative and I, I got to agree with it, but it's the size, the dimension that for me is an obstacle that we really can't afford to set a precedent on, Anthony, because there'll be a lot more homes like yours go in and around that area. It won't be something that's just as a one-off. This is going to be a case where down the road, garages now, maybe 25 years ago, a three-car garage was pursued, today, four-car garage, five-car garage, and you just don't know what people are going to present, even though they have lots of land, they think they're going to build more garage than a house. And it's something that we have to keep an eye on, we have to keep it contained. That's why we have the ordinances. The ordinances are something that we have to rely on to treat everyone fairly who came here yesterday, comes here today and will be here tomorrow. So I, you know, it's the five elements that really for me are the sticking point. I just don't see you making.
Can I ask a question?
You can, you can go up there, you have to go. Go right up on the podium.
Honey, they're right here.
Do you, do you want to share?
Uh, question.
What's that?
Hold on, just direct it through the chair and then.
Oh, okay.
Kayla, what was your question?
Oh, I was, I was asking if you wanted to read the five criteria or if you would like me to.
Please go ahead, Kayla.
Okay. So the five criteria, and again, the zoning board of appeals must make an affirmative finding on each of these criteria. Strict enforcement of the zoning ordinance would cause practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship to the property owner. The conditions that make the variance necessary are unique to the property and do not apply to other properties in the same zoning district. The conditions that make the variance necessary were not created by the property owner or their predecessor. The variance will not confer any special privileges on the property owner that are not available to other property owners in the same zoning district. And finally, the variance will not be contrary to the spirit or intent of the zoning ordinance.
Those are standards used by probably every community in this state when it comes to a variance request. It's not just Washington Township.
Well, I have two.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to, because I'm trying to understand and I'm sure Mr. Cavatile probably feels blindsided because I look at these old meeting minutes and his old request is here, it was voted on, and he had at that time 178 square foot variance. Do you think that that is the reason because it was so close or less than half of what he wants now?
It's not nearly as big a bite of the apple as the one today.
Right.
That makes a difference.
And also a reminder to the board that those past cases don't constitute precedence. That's not, that's not the way variances in ZBA are held, they're not held to that same standard. In every case, every unique property and application, you go through these five criteria regardless of how the board has voted on previous. Again, it's, it's slightly different than, you know, other court proceedings or precedents created.
So what I'm hearing also from you, Kayla, is our hands are tied anyways because we don't have, we, our hands are tied because we don't meet the law, the letter of the law to say yes to him.
Correct. If, if, if the ZBA finds that those criteria have not been met, then you don't have a grounds to approve the variance. You would have to find an affirmative finding on each of those five criteria.
And if we were just to, if we were to, let's say we approved the, the request and then a neighbor were to sue the ZBA or, or the Washington Township and say, you approved this request, but you clearly did not meet these five requirements, and then Washington Township would be found guilty or.
Right.
Probably the legal.
Viable.
Viable for approving something that was not actually, so we could get sued by one of your neighbors or somebody else.
Didn't you invite them here? Weren't they invited to this meeting?
There was a public notice made.
Oh, yes.
The opportunity, correct?
But that doesn't carry weight in the state law, I mean, I.
So my only, you want to go through that and then I'll talk.
Go ahead. No, it's all right, go ahead.
The only thing that I, that concerns me is we paid roughly $580 to come to this meeting, but you're, you're saying that this meeting, you, we didn't really have a shot anyways, correct? Because it doesn't meet your, the ordinance law, is that correct?
And those, those criteria were part of the application, so as an applicant, you responded to each of those five criteria and in those criteria, you, you specified that you did not meet those criteria. So yes, that's correct, the application was processed, but it was submitted with those five criteria available.
Then what is the purpose of this meeting then, I guess?
You have the right to request a variance, ma'am.
Okay, but we, you're saying legally you can't even get that variance.
We're not saying anything yet, we haven't voted.
Oh, okay.
And we haven't had your public hearing yet.
Right.
No, public hearings after we're done.
And that's where I think we're just trying to.
Well, there's, there's.
Find the hardship or the.
I, I could be wrong, but there, there's a few other addresses and if I'm doing the calculations correctly, as I did with my here at 5671 Bradbury Run, this house here is, looking at the records, a little over 4,300 square feet and a third of that is 1,429 allowed. From looking at the record again, it was approved for 18, 1816 square feet, the garage. Seems like that, that property was over by 387 feet. So were they approved? That's just one.
I don't think they.
And this, this is, this is recently, this house was built.
They didn't come before this board.
What's the address?
5671 Bradbury Run. This one here is currently under construction. I don't know how they, they got away with it. And there's another one here. 61430 Bradbury Run, eight-car garage, 6791 square feet, a third of that is 2,021 allowable. They were approved for 3,379 feet, 1,138 square feet over.
Well, the building department here must have done the approval because it didn't come before our zoning board, Anthony, plus the lots in Bradbury Run might be a bit, a bit larger.
They're not, they're small, they're one acre.
What's a?
Mine's almost two.
Yeah, he's almost two.
So I, I, unless I'm doing something wrong, and this is all public information, we, we got an issue.
Might, might happen.
And I can understand your frustration, but those approvals didn't come before the ZBA and their, their hands are not tied because of those. You know, we can have a, a conversation outside of this meeting about that and Dana's taken those addresses so she can go back and look, but again, not, not the fault of the members of this body.
Well, I'm sure I could probably find more examples too. There's another one. 58, this is the one, my house, which was approved. There's another one here. 5769 Coswell Drive, 3,311 square feet, a third of that is 1,092. I understand that you can go up to 1,200, but they were approved for just a little over that, which is close, 1,215, so they were over 15 feet.
What street was that on?
Coswell, 5769 Coswell.
Bradbury.
Brad, it's in Bradbury Sub, correct.
Anthony, did you?
Unless you guys have a special.
Yes, your ma'am.
Variance for Bradbury.
I was going to ask you, did you bring that up to the building department in reviewing your presentation?
No, because I honestly thought this wasn't going to be an issue because it was approved in 2018 when I came in front of this board.
Well, if they suggested you need a variance, that, that's a tip, that's a clue.
I understand that, but.
Yeah.
I, I think it's ordinance needs to be addressed.
That could be.
You guys should take a look at this, maybe modify it because.
We've done these things before, you haven't put a shovel in the ground yet with this building yet.
Well, no, I can't without the permit.
Okay, very good. Glad to hear that. Sometimes folks come to us after the fact and that really makes it difficult for us.
So, so basically I'm, I'm looking at this and it's. I don't know, I don't know what to say there. If this guy's over 1,000 square feet, over.
Well, I'm sure Dana's going to check in with the building department, see how those things occurred, but nonetheless, we still have to have a public hearing tonight.
If I may approach.
Sure.
I can give.
Do you please do? Thank you for the homework.
Thanks for doing the homework, definitely.
Yeah. So whoever can make a motion for a public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
A second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, our public hearing is open. Madam, do you get any correspondence on this at all, Dana? As far as public hearing, any comments?
None.
Emails? Just to announce briefly, notices hereby given that the Washington Township Zoning Board of Appeals will hold public hearing on Monday, April 7th, 2025, boardroom of the Washington Township Municipal Building, located at 57900 Van Dyke, Washington Township, Michigan 48094, beginning at 6:30. Purpose of the meeting is to consider an appeal by Anthony Cavatile, 5876 Harrington Court, Washington, Michigan 48094. By reason of Washington zoning ordinance, Article 5, site standard, section 5.1, accessory buildings and structures, the accessory buildings, residential districts, four attached garages in R1 and A1 zoning districts, maximum permitted square footage of an attached garage shall not exceed 1,200 square feet or one-third of the total square footage of the living area of the house excluding basements, whichever is greater. Of obvious purpose and intent, requesting variance which granted allows applicant to construct an attached garage that exceeds the total allowable square footage in the A1 zoning district by 340, 380 square feet. Property in question, parcel 2404091013, address 6350 31 Mile Road, location, south side of 31 Mile Road, east of Mount Road. All property owners within 300 feet have been notified, public may participate. This copy of notice has been mailed out and sent to all those folks who are within that area and that was published March 19th, 2025, the Record Newspaper by our illustrious Secretary, Michelle Mile. Okay, is there anybody here in the audience that would like to or care to comment one way or the other about Mr. Cavatile's application?
Make a motion to close public hearing?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, public hearing is closed.
I'd like to make one comment right now. It, it appears that possibly we need more, more information as far as if the applicant wants to submit what she did, some, some of the properties. And I know we have different options, we can either vote today or we, we could postpone. I know we have different options. We can either vote today, or we could postpone. But it's up to the board, and if we have any more, you know, questions that need to be answered, I know the position of Kayla. But
If you're making a motion to postpone, I would second that motion.
It wasn't a motion, but I'll make the motion then.
I'll support.
Okay. Roll call.
Oh, definitely for me. Chairman Seko.
Yes, to postpone.
Coulso.
No.
Poled. Yes.
Yes, to postpone.
Milam, yes. Pollak?
No.
No.
Okay. Anthony, we're going to postpone the decision on your matter.
The May 5 meeting. May 5?
May 5 meeting, for us to review whatever you've presented, give you the chance, the time, the opportunity. I don't know who you'll deal with as far as at the staff level, again, if that is deemed proper. And then we'll see you back here May 5, and then we'll make a final decision.
Well, that's fine. I just, that, I guess that stuff needs to be verified, and see if that is the case.
But remember, every single situation is unique. So it's hard to sit up here and say, you know, yes, that happened for that reason. I'm going to guarantee you that when you had those five things that went with the other properties, they were there. You know, they didn't just willy-nilly vote yes. So that's why I agreed with postponing, hopefully that you can find these elements and bring them back to us. That would be the most helpful.
Looking for that hardship is really what we're, for the five criteria. Check those over, try to bring those back.
Okay.
I mean, we want to be on your side, of course.
I get it. I understand.
We want all the constituents. We want everybody happy. But right now, our hands are tied.
Understood. Okay.
Beautiful house. It's a great design.
Thank you.
Really is.
Our review letter specifies, too, those, there were two criteria there. So, you know, demonstrating, those are the two that you'd want to focus on, and that's the case you'll have to make back to the ZBA.
Okay. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Did some good homework, Anthony. You deserved the postponement. We just wish you the best.
All right, thank you.
All right. Moving on to our next agenda item. If I can get to my page. Okay. Public comments? No. Oh, I don't know. We don't have any public, so I don't think there's any public comments. ZBA member comments. I promised I'd make referral to number three in the agenda. And I have to be, you know, I'm always honest with you all.
Hope so.
I had to call Bobby Seibert Friday. I had asked Dana a question last month about the wording of number three. And it really struck me odd, and I've noticed it after it's been in there for, how long, Dana, since last summer? But it's just, it just shows that wording, address of any conflicts of interest, what it can generate. And so I took it as the most negative. It's a kind of language that is not desired by any governmental employee, appointee, elected person, conflict of interest. Most people think it's illegal. Well, it's not illegal to have a conflict of interest or an appearance of impropriety. However, it can turn into illegality quickly. And an appearance of impropriety, it can be quite devastating in that in politics and government, perception is the reality. And that was my concern, that to, right after a roll call, to throw this statement out there, address any conflicts of interest, to me could generate a conversation that I don't think any of us want. Now, I know the good conflict of interest. That's when one of us may feel or believe we're involved with a party that comes before us. And it's upon us to say something about it and recuse ourselves if in the event, something may have occurred or did occur innocently, like we sell property. And we sell property to somebody who's going to come before the zoning board or before the planning commission. And it's up to that person on the board to stand up and say, you know, I sold my property. I think I may have a conflict. I want to recuse myself. And that's what you do. That's what is required of any individual. But it should be and must be done appropriately at the case calling, not at an amorphous level of the agenda. Because it could, at the amorphous level of the agenda, it could open up discussion that none of us want to engage in, and maybe we're confused. And just like after a case, we decide, we really shouldn't be talking about it. I mean, I know Christine Anderson and Bob Seibert, I mean, they kind of like shudder when we start throwing names around of cases from the past. Because you just never know who's listening, who's watching, and who may be upset with what they hear that we may refer about in their case. And this is a door opener, this number three item. Now, we didn't do wrong as a board to insert this into our agenda. It is part of our bylaws of the zoning board of appeals. And it's required in our zoning board of appeals. So what we have to do is amend that and get that incident, that
Order of agenda.
Order of agenda, conflict of interest, removed. And here's what Bob told me today. As we discussed, a quote, "As we discussed on Friday, the issue of whether a conflict of interest exists rests on each individual ZBA member and is raised on a case-by-case basis. The proper procedure for raising conflicts is straightforward. On any given agenda item, a ZBA member who believes that he or she has a conflict of interest should raise the issue with the chair prior to any issue of the agenda item. The member should disclose the basis of the conflict, request that the ZBA vote to permit the member to recuse him or herself from participating in the discussion, and the vote on the agenda item," which is excellent advice. "At that point, a motion will be made to permit the member to recuse him or herself from participating in voting on the agenda item. Wise. Once the motion passes, the member may remain present during the meeting, but should not participate in any way in the discussion or vote. The bylaws which place conflicts on every agenda is awkward and is certainly not common practice. You won't find that wording on any one of the other Washington Township agendas, board of trustees, or the planning commission. There's no need to place the item on an agenda. If members have a conflict, they will and they must raise it at the appropriate time." You want that discussion to be connected to a case. That way, we're a little more clear and immune if there is a discussion about a conflict of interest, because it pertains to a specific item on the agenda. To put it where it is, number three, can just open the door to anything wide open.
When I think chair, too, it gives the appearance as if we have such a, so many conflicts of interest, that we've had to separate it and have its own line item.
Yes.
Like, as if there has been an issue in the past, we're calling it out and pulling it into where we already have all the conflict of interest stuff built into your rules of procedure, you know. So it's not necessary to have it as its own line item.
One thing I want to tell each one of your board members, one thing that I thought about for a long time, just stating those words, conflict of interest. If I were to state those words as chair, not just me, but whoever's going to be chair, every meeting, any, anyone want to address conflicts of interest, somebody who's been watching time in and time out is going to wonder, why is he asking, why is she asking those board members if there are any conflicts of interest? And there's nothing more awkward. And if you're in the public sector, a conflict of interest can be as close as saying, or hearing, you're fired. Because it's a very toxic statement. And we just want to make sure that if it's necessary, it's on the shoulders of the person who has the apparent conflict to raise the issue when the case is called. And I think that way, we're safe. If we engage in any conversation about it or ask questions, I think that no one can say we're subject to any liability as far as slander or defamation. Now, let's say some, some board member does something, and they sell their property, and they don't raise the issue. And maybe there's a contract, a contingency in the contract that they're selling their land, and they're going to be presiding over this matter. And that contingency is worth a lot of money to them if, say, a variance is granted. But they never say anything. I mean, that would be a serious violation. But we're not the enforcement mechanism, and I hope that never happens to any of us here on this zoning board, today or tomorrow. But in the 15 years on the planning commission, I think I've seen a recusal request, and you can count on one hand how many times I've missed 15 years, maybe twice, somebody's recused. But it was a good conflict of interest. It wasn't a bad one. But if we're not aware of it, and we have to be, and I think this is as much of the discussion of those toxic words as we need, I think we want to exercise our, you know, our ability as a zoning board of appeals, with our rules, to amend that part of the rules that require that that be placed on the agenda. And I believe that is, oh, where are you? Where are you? Except comments, any staff?
Just on the next page.
On the next page. Thank you. That's why you're sitting there.
I think 3.7, order of business removal of four.
3.7? Yes, there it is. 3.74. There it is. Address any conflicts. So, I mean, what we did in making the move, whenever we made it, was not wrong. It was our bylaws. We were following our bylaws. But now, I think the advice is very sound, that we want to amend our bylaw not to include that as an agenda item, because it is not a good look. And the board of trustees and the planning commission does not have that on their agenda item. So I think we want to go with a continuous, consistent agenda that, as we have historically, start out with the first three elements. And number three has always been approval of the agenda, not conflicts. So, you know, that's all I'm going to say about that. You know, y'all got any comments, please, you know, fire away.
I have one comment. I mean, look, I agree, we probably shouldn't have it on there. But I think in the past, we've never had an issue. Like, remember, only a couple of members have mentioned, and I was one of them, like, I live in Glacier Club. And we had a lot of variances in, like, in one phase. And even though that's three, like, a half a mile away, or almost a mile away, I still stated that I live in Glacier Club, but I have no conflict of interest, either financially or else, any other gain. And so basically, you're saying that I shouldn't even bring it up then. Because if I have no conflict
Right.
So just keep silent.
Exactly. You don't have a conflict. Michael.
I think what Mr.
I promise.
Mr. Seko is trying to say as well, too. He's saying that he has full trust in our membership, that we will be able to identify if we have a conflict, and we don't need it to be on the agenda every week.
Yeah.
That's because it's not on board of trustees, it's not on planning. So he just wants to be clear throughout the whole township on all boards.
I tell you, I didn't want it to be used as a cattle prod, for anybody to think that they got to say something. And, you know, you bring that toxic language up, and none of us may bring up the issue, but we have something on an agenda, and for the public, we invite them. They want something, they have something to say. And they may come up here and start accusing any one of us of a conflict of interest, like you.
No, that's right. We are adults. We're successful individuals. So basically, you're saying the agenda item, number three, instead of addressing any conflicts of interest, what are you going to say? What's it going to say?
That we do the process of changing our bylaw, Benny?
What's going to be number three?
Approval of the agenda.
It's just not going to be listed.
Just get it out of there.
Just like it is on all the other boards.
So, we have, we have multiple variances. We only had one tonight. Sometimes it could be two or three variances. One could be your neighbor, your neighbor. When it comes up, and you feel like, yes, my next-door neighbor, or that's my cousin, that's my uncle.
Yeah.
That would be the time to tell it.
Exactly.
You don't need to put it on the agenda.
Right.
Exactly.
So let's just do that.
We can, I believe if we want to strike it from the agenda from here on forward, but do the process of the motion for amending our bylaws. I think we need to do that. And we have a process for
There you go.
Amending our bylaws.
To get rid of Article 6.
Yes.
There you go.
Just keep it in our procedures as a board member packet, but not put it on the bylaws for the meetings.
Yeah, to remove, so it's 3.7, order of business removal of four.
Yes.
From being placed on the agenda, which is the order of the agenda.
Right.
So you just remove that, everything would move up then.
Yes.
It's Article 6 in there.
Is that your motion there, Secretary Michelle?
Oh, that is my motion.
Good motion.
All right, Benny seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And last comment, I think that anytime we have a new member, I think they should be given the bylaws. Because I didn't even see the bylaws when I first came on, but that was years ago.
Well, we just adopted them.
I was given the bylaws.
That's why I didn't see them.
Yeah, you didn't see them when you first joined. They did not exist then. We wrote them.
I believe Troy
Mr. Plante, they gave me the bylaws when I just started with here. I was given everything.
And they're on the website, too. Just, you know, if you lose your copy, they're right there.
Yeah, I went to the qualification ordinances. Like, I looked in there, you know. But I mean, everyone should be aware, especially like a new person, or someone that's just been appointed, you know, as an alternate. So you got yours, though, when you first came, right?
It was adopted in 2021. Everything when I came here was seamless.
See?
Perfection.
Well
Mr. Plante, you might be showing your age of
The amount of years served.
You might want to check your stone tablets. It's been that long. That's all right. I've been picked on by other members, too, so it's all right.
I believe when we developed the bylaws, maybe about four years ago.
2021.
2021. Chief Warne Oster, Troy, sir, you were on it, right?
I was already, yes.
Benny, were you on the committee? Okay, there was the three of us, at least. Michelle, you weren't there. Michael, I think that time you went to the dark side.
Yeah, probably. I came back.
You'll never do that again.
I was stunned, I saw.
Okay.
That's such a
All right, I think you. And Dana, you see the last part in the bylaws on how to make that notice to the employee, to the board members. I think it's three days before the meeting, they have to see the changed language for approval.
Okay. So we'll do that prior to the, it'll be with your packet then at next month's meeting, and then you can make that
Yes.
Formal vote and adoption, and then we'll go from there.
We won't have to have it on number three agenda.
I think we're going to have to have it.
Yeah. Okay.
One more time, Bob, you're going to have to see it.
Well, you think, I don't think we have to. You all approved your, no, it's on, it doesn't matter. We'll take care of it then. But I thank you all for the discussion and the concern. It is an important issue.
Oh, thank you, Chairman Seko. It is. It's
Those are toxic words, and I hope none of us ever have to hear them out ourselves, or our board, or our board of trustees, or the planning commission, and no one. But they're so misconstrued by the general public that a discussion like that, the threads can fly every which way, and it can be very problematic, especially in this era of the internet, and how people want to, you know, voice their opinion about what's going on in their government. And that's the last thing we want to be, any one of us want to be accused of. Okay, anything else we want? Okay, anything else we want to say?
I think there's the National Day of Prayer coming up, the first?
May 1.
The township is going to be hosting it, so check the website, May 1.
Yeah, we have something here we always do, right? Do we do it right at the memorial? I believe we do it at the 27 of Van Dyke, right at the memorial. Hopefully, there's no snow.
She's asking Troy. She's not asking me. It'll be on the website, and they've got to post it on the front door here, May 1.
Very good, Troy. Anything else?
I'm making motion to adjourn.
Got a second from Troy? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, very good.
Sorry, really quick before you guys go.